Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the April 11th zoning board hearing. We've got a couple of business items real quickly, and we'll start with the minutes of the previous meeting, which are March 14th. Please note that members present is John Dagnes, Mark Casaloya, David Claro, and myself. With that, is there a motion?
I make a motion.
Motion by John Dagnes, second.
Second.
Second by Mark. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Pass this down to Melissa, because otherwise it'll end up in a file somewhere. I did get, we got correspondence from Milford Field for the 40B Performance Pond. We have been notified that, by email, that they're requesting to be on our next upcoming hearing. On the panel at that time, it was myself, John Dagnes, Mark Casaloya, David Claro. So I need a motion to continue till our next scheduled hearing.
Motion.
Motion by Mark of a second.
Second.
Second by David. All those in favor? Opposed? That is unanimous. Pass that down to her, please. Thank you. That being F to 705. This is on the continued, Mr. Gray here? Come on up, Mr. Gray.
Yes.
This is on the continued application of Ronald Gray, 157 Congress Street, for special permit relief pursuant to the Section 2.3 of the zoning bylaw in relation to a parcel of land located on the northerly side of Birch Street, known and numbered as 50 Birch Street, which property is owned by 50 Birch LLC and shown on Assessor's Sheet 43 Lot 1. The special permit is sought in order to prevent the use of a portion of the premise for the display of automobiles and sales related, along with an office space and parking and storage. With that, I did get communications in. Mr. Gray has submitted the, looks like, the proper site plan. There are large plans here for board members to look at. You guys want to share this one, along with what is passed out?
I can pull one off, but...
No, that's okay. We got it. We finally got it. All right. The planning board did review everything. The petition has submitted a special permit application for consideration on the ZBA's 31424 meeting to establish the automotive sales operation in subject property. The applicant, the application was deemed incomplete by the board due to the plan having been modifications of a prior plan produced without the authorization. The fact was attested to in a written correspondence provided by the engineering firm, which the plan was then misappropriated. During the 314 public hearing, the applicants requested ZBA granted a continuance till tonight's meeting to allow sufficient time for the applicant to hire the engineering firm and prepare a proper site plan as required. Townplanner indicates or confirm that such plan has now been submitted. The plan is entitled 50 Birch Street, map 34 Lot 1. Site plan of land dated 31424 revised through 4224, prepared by D and L Design Group, and depicts the appropriate land use details and zoning information. Said plan indicates the existing configuration and the interior building features and office areas. It indicates the proposed second-floor auto sales office location and a vehicle display area in the easterly parking lot. The off-street parking calculations have been updated to include not only the existing contracted yard uses of the property, but the proposed auto-related uses as well. Auto sales are provided in the zoning bylaw by the ZBA special permit within the IB district, which this site is currently in the IB district. And the revised site plan indicates 37 existing parking spaces on the property. A total of 29 spaces are required for all of the uses being proposed, which leaves adequate spaces available for six used vehicles, displayed areas that are being proposed. Therefore, they made a recommended application for approval subject to the number of vehicles for sale and displayed by a limit of six. In addition, a change of use site plan approval from the planning board is required subsequent to any special permit approved by the ZBA. So with that, board members, any comments, questions? Basically, the plan is outlined to have six proposed exterior display parking locations as outlined on the plan. And by the way, I usually have to sign the plan when they're submitted. And then there's also an office aerial location on the plan as well for the office for the automotive applicant and use. As you know, any conditions that we apply on these type of permits, it only runs with the applicant and does not run with the property. So therefore, any decision the zoning board makes tonight, positive or negative, it will be running with the applicant itself. Any questions or comments? Dave, I'll start with you. Anything so far? No. Bobby?
All set.
All set. Mark?
Looks good to me.
Yep. John?
All set.
And the other John. Okay. So with that, as we discussed, we'll take a motion to allow the use for automotive... Yep, you have a question?
I got a comment.
Go ahead.
And I don't even know, you know, I don't do this very often.
Yeah.
I sat on that site for nine years, but I fear a little bit.
That's okay.
I don't even know what I'm going to ask you, is it feasible or permissible? But I'm just going to put it out there. And then you guys give your comments.
Sure.
Whatever you go with, you know? So I've had a few renditions of this plan, so it's been a little bit of a long run. And, you know, so, you know, I can care with everything that's here. You know, if I understood it, I'd say, yeah, I get it. But I, it's right. So the town plan, you know, because there's 37 spaces and there are 29 required for the other usage, which leaves eight spaces. And they're available and they're unattended as of before tonight. So I originally requested nine spaces for my class two license. And there's been a six, there's been a six space limitation put on there. And I understand why. I get all that, you know? But still, unfortunately, with all the renditions that have happened with this plan, the spaces are overlooked and they aren't included. So again, I'm just going to put this out there. In an effort to do this thing professionally, I guess I'm asking the board to consider conditional approval of the eight spaces. But with, you know, included would be updated divisions to the plan, as well as updated approval from the town planner. And I'd like to do this without the continuance. You know, the adjustments to the plan doesn't require any parking changes. And my already spoken, this engineer has agreed to make the changes quickly. And, you know, it's, you know, he said, he says the extra two are there. There's an oversight and it's feasible. If the, if that doesn't work for you folks and I can't get some type of conditional acceptance tonight, you know, then, you know, I can accept the limitation of six places. I just, I really just prefer not to hold up, you know, another 30 days if possible.
Well, I can make a recommendation to you that will probably help in both regards.
Okay.
Based on the engineered plan, based on what's, always remember that whatever we give you tonight, you still have to go back to the planning board for site plan. They may require an additional handicap spot. I have no idea. They control the ground site process. We control the special permit of your license. So what we can do tonight is actually, if the board wants to do that, provide you the six. And then you can go back, get to the planning board. And if you, if you deem later you want an additional two, you can always just come back to add.
Well, again, not knowing about anything about that, that's what I thought it was. But as I kind of like done my homework, which by the way, I could be wrong, right? It seems like it's a big deal, like I'm starting all over for two more spaces. And I don't know that to be true, but it seems like I'm revising everything with new sets of plans and all this other stuff where I possibly could just make the change and correction now and get it, and get it updated.
There's all, you can come back with an amendment for an additional two. So it's as simple as sending a letter out for an additional two.
It's not a big deal.
It's not a big deal. You don't have to go through the site plan. Your biggest caveat when you started was, we can't issue special permits without an updated, fully updated plan that is stamped by an engineer for your use. That's what's been the delay. So now that we've got it, we can now move forward.
Yeah.
And then I can give you the instructions of what's going to happen after that. So saying that...
I just didn't, I just didn't want to make it bigger than it had to be if that be the case.
Right.
So now it's not the case.
Well, again, if everything was submitted the first time the right way, you'd probably be operating right now.
Right.
I guarantee you, you would be. But in any event, so is there a motion to...
Dave, are those two additional spaces, the island spaces?
Yeah, so I yelled it. I yelled it.
Right, but we can't, we know, I just want, we can't...
I just want to clarify for each.
I was a little unclear about the whole space thing tonight.
Again...
I knew the decision, what debate decision. I just didn't know where...
Right. Planning board regulates the ground site, the engineering site. That's their thing. Ours is the special permit aspect based on the recommendations out of the planning board. So again, if someone made a calculation mistake on the plan, you can address that later. I want you to leave here tonight knowing that you've got at least six you need right now so you can move forward. And that's my focus, is to try and get you to move forward. Does anybody in the audience want to be heard on this application? Any other comments or questions? All right. With that, I'll take a motion that we approve the site for the proposed exterior display of six locations as outlined on the plan. Proposed exterior display, 975 square feet, and that the, and that the license gets issued in the applicant's name and does not run with the property. Now, motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve with those conditions. There is a second.
A second.
Second by Mark. All those in favor? Opposed? That is unanimous. Next step.
Yes.
You've got a 20-day appeal period. You know that?
I know, well, I've heard it.
So in the 20-day, if no one appeals this decision in 20 days, make sure that when you get that, you need to record it. You have to have this recorded.
You already said something to record it.
You're going to have to record the ZBA decision that you get to the Worcester Registry of Deeds, because that's going to need to be recorded in order for the final site plan approval. Planning board can approve this.
I can send it to my house, I assume.
Well, just go to town council. You can pick it up in person if you want, or it'll go right to, it'll go right to your house. So it's a 20-day appeal period, and the issue will be done at that point.
So I can't expect anything until after 20 days.
Correct. So if someone could come in and go against our decision, and then it, everything stops, I don't see that hap, I don't see that happening, but... So with that, those in favor? No one's opposed? Congratulations. Next step on, remember, this is, you're going to need, you're going to, I have to sign one of these plans, but you do need to bring, go back to the planning board.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I gotta wait.
Today is 4/11/24.
What?
Hold on.
I didn't want to be seen.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
She's doing okay.
Can you? Okay. Next on the agenda. This is on the application of Zo Realty LLC, 21 Floral Street, Newton, for variance release from provisions of Section 2.5 of the zoning bylaw in relation to an 87,450 square foot parcel of land located on the northerly side of Haven Street, currently noted as number 76 Haven Street. The variance relief is sought in order to divide the property into two lots, as shown on the accompanying plans. Lot 1A to be 43,725 square feet, and Lot B to contain 43,727 square feet. And each lot is available for single-family construction. On this, on the hearings tonight, myself, John, John Dagnes, Mark, and Robert Capitano. Let me just take a look at the application real quickly. Okay. So the applicant is looking to do two residential lots. The, the variance is requested in Section 2.5 of the intensity use schedule from a variance of 87,000 square foot minimum lot area required to 43,000 square feet of area for two lots. What circumstances, according to the question that was asked, what circumstances exist relating to the soil conditions, shape, and topography of the subject premises, which do not generally affect other land in the zoning district that would warrant the relief requested? The applicant states residence or dwellings are consistent with the surrounding uses and the highest and best use of the property. Concerning the question, if the variance was not granted, what hardship would be caused by the circumstances above in 13? The applicant states the inability to construct two residential dwellings. Concerning the variance will not cause substantial detriment to the public good. The applicant states that the surrounding land uses are residential. The proposed uses of the property is in keeping with the character of neighborhood and with the purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw. Before I turn this over to the applicant, I will read into the minutes the planning board comments. And the planning board did review this petition at their April 2nd meeting and recommends the following. The planning board made a favorable recommendation. Townplanner letter indicates that the applicant was requesting a variance from a lot area requirements to allow for the division of the subject lot into two lots, each for the construction of a single-family dwelling. The proposed lot split will result in two approximately one-acre residential building lots that will each comply with all applicable zoning requirements for the lot area. Proposed Lot 1 will have 43,007 and change, and Lot 2, 1B, will have 43,700 and change. The ID rural residential district requires 87,000 per lot. The subject property is the site of the former Dunbar Transportation Garage and Limousine Service, the north building of which was destroyed by fire in March of '22. The south building that remains is to be razed, and the proposed development will result in two single-family homes, will greatly improve the area of the neighborhood, and finally eliminate the decades-long and sometimes problematic non-conforming use. Therefore, the planning board sent a favorable report off to this board. So with that, the floor is yours. Let me make a comment, let me make a comment before you start, please. Anybody in the audience that wants to address this, please make sure any questions come through the chair and not directly at the applicant, please. Okay? Thank you.
There, excuse me.
Yeah.
I don't see a recommendation or anything from the planning board itself. This is from the town planner. Do we have anything?
Yeah, I have the letter right here for the planning board.
Okay, I don't have it yet.
On the first page. Right here. Yeah. This is the planning board.
That's the town planner?
No, here. Planning board, right here.
Oh, okay.
He should have had it.
This wasn't with that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Don't get old.
Bariparapuru.
Don't get old. My apologies.
All right. With that, please introduce yourselves and let us know what you're trying to do.
Again, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Rob, Patrick, Ellen.
Nice to see you, Rob, in a different position.
Yes, thanks very much. My pleasure. It's been a while before I stood up on before you, but it's a pleasure. Tonight, I sit before you on behalf of Zo Realty LLC, the applicant and property owner. And with me is Bill Zoal of Zo Realty LLC. And as you've written, Mr. Chairman, this is an application for a variance for a property located at 76 Haven Street. And I'd like to show you an aerial photo, which is basically the assessor's map. It's sort of a historical aerial photo. Mr. Zoal acquired the property in 2015, I believe it was. And at that time, it was a pre-existing non-conforming use. It was a commercial use that had a residential component. In 2022, there was a fire that effectively destroyed the building. So there's a need to really do something with it, improve it, get some use out of it. What you see on the plan that we prepared and submitted to you shows the existing conditions. There is, there is a building that remains that's going to be razed. There is a remnant of a foundation. There's some edge of pavement, some other sort of remnants of that prior commercial use. It is in residential neighborhood, R, rural residential, or RD. And the proposal is to split the lot as to area evenly. As you read, each lot would have over an acre or 0.3725 square feet of area. The lots otherwise conform as to frontage. We show on the plan building setbacks. We're confident that any single-family residential structures that would be constructed on the property would meet those setbacks. In other words, there's ample room for a single-family house. So as I said, Mr. Chairman, there's a need for Mr. Zoal to, you know, clean it up and realize some potential from the property. There was consideration of some other uses, multifamily. There was some collaboration with the town planner that discussed those sorts of uses. But after going through all that, it was decided that really the use best suited for this property, given the location, the size, and the neighborhood, is single-family, namely two single-family uses. So that's why we're here, requesting a variance. We don't think it narrates from the intent of the bylaw, because we can meet the setbacks. They're pretty amply sized lots. The houses will be in keeping with the rest of the neighborhood and overall really improve what is not a terribly pretty property at the moment. So we respectfully request that you grant the relief to allow Mr. Zoal to go ahead and build some single-family houses.
Okay, great. Thank you. Before I turn it over to board members, just a quick question. On the plan, it shows a waterfall fish pond.
Yes.
Is that, is that with the property? Is that still there?
Well, it is on the property.
Was it like man-made?
And you can see on the aerial that it's, it's in this northeast, I think it is, corner. I don't know a lot about the history of how it got there or when it was constructed. I don't think...
I didn't build it.
But it's man-made?
Yes.
Okay. That was my question.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. With that, John, John Dagnes, I'll start with you.
These are potentially single-family homes, two of them. What are we looking at as far as bedrooms?
Four bedrooms, two and a half baths, somewhere in the vicinity of 2,200 square feet to keep in conjunction with the homes that are behind me.
Yeah.
And two car garages detached.
This is formerly the Dunbar property.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
John?
I'm good.
Questions?
Yeah, this is supposed to be, this is two-acre area, correct? Minimums two acres.
The same thing you did around McCallum and McGill.
Yeah, that's minimum two acres.
87,000 square feet.
Yeah, so we're splitting it. The variance is going to be for 40,000, 40,000 approximately.
43,720.
Clean up that place that's been a nightmare for a long time. It's going to be a single-family home, four-bedroom, like I said, approximately 2,200 square feet. And my thing is to make sure it stays as a single-family home. All of a sudden, nobody comes back here, says we want a duplex in.
We already, we already looked into that option, and we were told that single-family is the single use for this property.
What size, what size of the property surrounding it?
They're all acre, acre.
They're four-may, two acres. That was the Dunbar, actually, the junkyard. So he just chopped it into four mays in conjunction with the frontage on Haven Street.
The other surrounding lots, two acres? Are they one acre?
I believe this lot is a non-conforming lot.
Right around McCallum and McGill. It went from a two-acre to a one-acre. Same right around McCallum.
This is a plan that was recorded in 2002 that divided the property.
It was a long watch.
Yes.
Lot alleged.
They are in excess of, the minimum, 80,000.
Correct. And your hardship is inability to construct two residential dwellings?
Yes.
I, I don't see that as a hardship. It's zoned for one single family. I personally don't see that as a legitimate hardship. My other opinion is if this zoning board grants this variance, we are pretty much rezoning that piece of land. Okay, from RD to RC.
Now, Mike, my comment is, under the pre-existing condition that it currently is, they could turn around and rebuild what's there. But I'm not, I'm not in favor of doing that.
Let me ask a question.
Just pointing facts.
Let me ask a question.
You have that right.
Yep. If we restricted it to 80 acres, I mean, 80 square feet, would they have the ability to put a multifamily home in that same spot?
No. No. The only way you could do it is... 40-beard.
I'm asking it for a reason.
The only way you could do it. 40-beard.
I'm not 40-beard when I say multi-home, I'm saying duplex.
If they 40-beard, they can do a lot more than that.
Yeah, but I know if they 40-beard. I'm just saying, if we said you got to stay with one building on 80 acres, could they do a duplex on that though? The reason I'm asking is I personally...
It's not zoned for duplex. It's not zoned for two-family.
I know. I'm just asking if they come back in front of us, it would be an issue. I'm saying it because I'd rather, I'd rather see two single-family homes there. That's what I'm saying. I'm trying to cut off any other...
Personally, I think the negotiation here is, he's got an existing building that it burned up, right?
Yes.
And under the catastrophe clause, you're allowed to build it again. Nobody could ever stop him from building it again. So some of the negotiation, and this one in particular, that's different than any other one in the future, is that although he's splitting it in half and you're getting two single-acre lots, you're not, other lots that would come before us wouldn't have a building that burnt down that is unsightly, that doesn't fit in the neighborhood. So that's sort of the negotiation.
I get it. Every, everything that comes in front of us is, should be looked at as an individual, but I just know in the past that we've not granted variances with the same kind of thing with all the areas, I mean, with all the setbacks met, not the areas, and those have been denied. Just trying to point out facts and just make it stay in my opinion and...
I have a quick question. On the, there's an existing foundation there, and then there's another building that's there. That, how big is that existing foundation, roughly? This is scaled...
7,000 square feet.
The back one?
Yeah, the building that burnt.
The existing foundation went towards the rear. How many square feet is that?
Somewhere between 7,000 and 8,000 square feet.
And then the front one?
There's a...
1,000?
Yeah, that's, that's the existing building that's still there. And then there's also a little garage that you'll see right here.
Yeah, yeah.
So basically, this is going, and this is going, and anything else that's left over from the fire, that's all going too.
Okay. So historically, just so everybody's aware, if he wants to go back and rebuild his building on the footprints he has, we will be looking at probably a 12,000-plus-square-foot facility and two buildings that can have, that he can replace what was lost.
Let's keep, let's keep the dialogue rolling off. I'm just, I'm being, I'm trying to let, it was brought up, so I want to make sure everybody's aware that he's got the right to rebuild on this piece of property. Let's make it clear, let's make it clear. He's not holding us foster's here.
And what was there? Who was it? What kind of building? Was it residential?
It was a, it was a mixed use.
Oh, that was a mixed.
It was a mixed use.
So he can still operate under that pretense?
Oh, yeah.
It was a junkyard, it was everything?
Oh, yeah.
Even that's in more than two years?
Yeah, because it's non-conforming.
It's fired. It's fired. If it's not conforming, though, use...
It's fired. You don't lose, you don't lose your right to rebuild. Replace it. Okay.
For the betterment of the town, two beautiful single-family homes there would do much better than what the possibilities could be.
And just a separate comment that's unrelated to the ZBA.
If they're all, if half, half the lot was, it was ledged, then you've got the one acre.
And I think my neighbor is here, he could probably testify better to that.
Kenny? All right. So why don't I do this? If the board's okay for right now, I'd like to have the public comment, and then we can, we can circle the wagon back with the board. So if you'd like to speak, please state your name for the record and.
Ken Size.
Grab the microphone, you're going to be live on TV.
So do I ask the question to you? Is that what you're saying?
Right, to me, to the applicant, to me.
What does he mean by they're razed building? They're going to leave a structure of razed building?
No, no, no.
Are you?
Out of the special permit, will be required that everything gets removed.
Okay.
So nothing will be standing.
In his opening statement, he mentioned that they were, they were going to raise the building.
Raise means take it out.
Take it down.
Take it down.
Not, not raise it, but.
All right.
Raise it up. And how about, do you, on the, does it say what the road frontage is normally?
Yeah, he's got a hundred and thirty-eight feet of frontage on, no, he's got more than that. You got twenty-two.
He's got the split in half right there. So what is, so your left half, what's the road frontage there?
There's one fifty, one six, almost one sixty.
One sixty.
Yeah. The other one goes all the way around. That's, that's probably three, there's one fifty, thirty, eighty, it's like almost three hundred.
Yeah, okay. And then on there, does it say which way the houses are somewhat going facing or not?
More than likely, I would assume, and that's up to him, because I'm sure, have you done testing yet for septic systems?
Yes.
Okay, so based on what you currently have, both houses are facing Haven Street this way on the plan?
Yes. So the one, the second lot?
So both houses, according to what they just said, both houses will be facing this way.
So, so that second.
Will face this way.
Okay. And then how about where, is it going to be a shared septic or individual septic?
Individual.
And where on, where's the septic's going to be?
Testing, the testing, he can probably identify where the testing pits were?
I mean, I know where they were digging, that's why.
Up high, right next to your driveway.
All right.
Not on your driveway, Kenny.
So both fields are going to be up there?
Yeah.
And what's, how close can a septic be to my property?
You go right to, you go right to the line.
Really?
Well, it's really the leaching area. The leaching, the leaching field's going to be all grass anyway, so. But the, but the plan, the septic design will show the expansion area within the plan, so it's certainly not going to be on your property.
Brad, what?
Have any of those done yet, Rob?
Yes.
Have any of those done yet, the design?
No, this is sort of step one of the process, and when the septic systems are designed, they'll be presented to the Board of Health for full review and compliance with Title Five. There is a setback to a property that Title Five covers. I think it's twenty feet.
Okay. I was just going to say, because I know if I build a shed, I need so many feet, twenty feet, I wish front of it. And then how about?
Yeah, so your front, so your frontage, your, your frontage from the street is thirty feet from the road.
Yeah.
The side is twenty feet.
Okay.
And the rear is thirty feet. So front thirty, sides twenty, thirty rear.
And our proposed retail is somewhere between seven and eight hundred thousand dollars, which is very much in conjunction with our neighborhood.
Oh, yeah, you'll be, you'll be there, sure. So the dotted line that Mr. Cappanapoli just outlined, see those, see the yellow?
Yep.
The house has to be within that box.
And then how about wells? Any wells?
This is the town water.
No, it's well.
Oh, it is?
It is well, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so a well will have to be sited on each lot and.
And they have to be so many feet from the septic system.
And, and even from your septic system.
Correct.
I already.
I'm pumped up.
I already have one well on the right side.
You'll keep that one for that property, probably?
Where is the well on that?
It's over near that duck pond or whatever that you guys were talking about.
So you may, but if your septic system's going back there, you may not be able to use that well.
Septic system's going way to the left.
We may have to drill a new well, new well.
There's no issue with water up there, please, it's.
So, another question.
Sure.
So when, when they were out digging for the septic area, the top left area?
Yep.
That's where everything.
Yes.
Perd properly?
Yes.
So if that property's divided where he's got it wrong, how can property two pump their septic waste on property ones?
Our preference would be to find a suitable location on this lot, but if there isn't, then there is an ability to use an easement or other mechanism to have a septic system.
I'm the property literally right next to that. It, the water won't, I mean, you, you can't septic the back of that second, you know, my driveway's there, my whole front yard wasn't able to do it, if I have a pump-up system.
Right.
So.
Yeah, and that's, that's.
Pump from one property to another?
Well, they, they can have an easement for that for the plan, yeah.
And then.
And we can certainly make, we can certainly provide or have, have, have the builder supply you with, once the design is done, so you have an idea of where everything is, if you want, I mean, anything will be an improvement at this point, I'm sure.
Just direct towards you, I know what you, I understand what you're saying with, you know, I mean, everybody does have, you know, I have ninety-two thousand square feet. I think I'm the smallest next to that, and everybody else has actually more than me up there. But when I, when I bought that land in two thousand and two from Mr. Dunbar, they, not Mr. Dunbar, but the Realtor told me that place was being knocked down for a house. So I have lived with that for twenty-two years.
I'd be there.
Yeah. You know, I think it'd be fantastic, because I, I mean, it took a long time for them to clean up the burned-down mess that was there. I mean, it's a, I mean, it's a eyesore, it's unbelievable, and the pictures do not do any justice. What I would recommend is drive by there and look at it. Look at my house, the next four houses up, before my house, up McGill, heading up, eventually the rest of the house.
This will actually help you.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, it's, you know, I understand with what our minimums should be, minimums, but for that property, the best thing for that is two residences. It really is.
So for the record, you're in favor?
Absolute.
So.
I just, you know, I was just concerned about the septic thing being, you know, being, you know, right next to my yard, basically. But, I mean, it's, you know.
And I've been Kenny's neighbor since two thousand and eleven, so.
So you know he likes to build everything on his own?
Exactly. Right, exactly. And we, we've communicated back and forth.
Who's going to, are you selling these out, right?
Yes.
It's going to be for sale?
Yes.
No family members or yourself?
No. For sale.
Anybody else?
Well, Martha Dunbar.
Yes.
I've been on Haven Street for sixty-six years. My husband and I own that property, and we ran the auto parts business there. I think this is a wonderful idea, and I think the two single-family homes would add to the area greatly. So I just want you all to know that. And my daughter owns the property next door. She has three acres there as well. So it's a good idea.
Yeah.
Just wanted you to know.
Where is, where is the ledge in this area?
Not, not that it matters.
I know it doesn't matter, I was just curious.
Anybody else care to be heard? Okay, the, the only comments I think are going to be is, you know, you're waiting on this decision before you move forward, Rob. So there's got to be some type of timeframe, I'm sure, for the removal of what's there and the time frame for that, so that I think the eyesore can go away sooner rather than later, I would assume, for the neighbors, so.
Well, no question that if the variance is granted, you know, the economic reality is that it'll accelerate the improvement of the property. I mean, if, if the board wants to put some reasonable timeframe on it, I'm sure that there's no one opposed to that.
Well, you, you got depots done already, right? Or perk and deeps, you already got them done, so.
Yes.
You're just not in system design yet, right?
Correct.
Okay, I got it, okay. All right. Any other comments? Questions? Okay. With that, it depends on how the board feels, but I'm assuming I'm going to take a motion in favor of as it was submitted. And if someone wants to make a comment concerning the structures to be removed when the building permit is issued, that's relatively be fine, because you'd have to get moving at that point, right?
Yes, sir.